Councilmember McNair, would you like to do the invocation?
My mic is on. Okay. All right. Heavenly Father, we pray for our city leaders as you give them responsibilities to watch and guide over the nations and their city duties as they serve. Lord, just as you told Prophet Ezekiel that you have made him watchmen for the people of Israel, I pray for the city leaders that they would be godly watchmen and watchmen over your creation. We pray that, just as you renew Ezekiel's call as watchman, I pray that you will renew the call for every city leader. Amen.
If we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Councilors, we move to the approval of the agenda. Entertainer motion to approve the agenda. The motion by Councilmember here, is there a second? Second about Councilmember Thompson, any discussion on the motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes, show of hands, those in favor of agenda approval. All right, Councilmember McNair? Okay. Hondros, good? All right. Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin? Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin approve of the agenda? Okay. What motion carries by those voted? All right, moving to 4.01 State Action Plan. Ms. Kelly, is that you?
No. Ms. Jody, how you doing? Good afternoon, let me find this presentation. Okay, good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor Protem and councilmembers. So last Monday at our council meeting, you all formally adopted and reaffirmed your commitment to the state legislative priorities. But we wanted to bring this back to you for an additional conversation and have our government relations consultant come and present to you all about what your priorities are for the next year for this short session of the biennium. So the city has had a longstanding relationship with John Easterling, who has been a wonderful partner to Fayetteville. You may have formerly known him with KTS Strategies and now we know him as John Easterling with Checkmate Government Relations. I did not use the wrong word. So we're really happy to have him back and his continuing partnership with us. And I'm going to turn it over to him and then you will see me again in a few moments.
Ms. Easterling, good to see you.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem and council, it is always good to be here in America's can-do city, the city of Fayetteville. I sound like a Baptist preacher because I am.
Sound like a spokesperson.
I'm a great spokesperson for you in Raleigh, trust and believe. But no, it is great to be here with you all today. And I imagine, I can just click through this? Okay, awesome. So we have made a lot of progress in our years of partnership together with one another. There's been some changes on our team with the name, but our commitment still stands the same and strong as ever. So just a quick overview of the delegation. As I mentioned during my last presentation, the Cumberland delegation has been kind of an anomaly out there by itself because of how much it has changed in just one cycle. It seems as if the entire delegation had changed. And with now the retirement of the Dean of the House, Representative Lucas, this delegation is once again subject to change. Our Senate member, Senator Val Applewhite, Senator Tom McInnis, who after 10 years in legislature, when we adjourn this biennium next year, he will be on the front row of the Senate and therefore our issues and the items that we're pushing for will also be on the front row with him as well. His district has changed. It used to encompass Fayetteville State, I also believe Methodist College as well. And now that is mostly, he'll have most of the outskirts of the city, southern part of the county. So thank you for that. Where we are today, just kind of to update you, is that we are now about to head into the short session of the legislature. This is going to only be for maybe about a month, month and a half. We will not be there long at all. It is the appetite of the current leadership to go ahead and handle the people's business and to get out of Raleigh as quickly as possible. There are a number of legislative primaries that are going on and these folks want to get back to running in their districts, talking to their constituents. A lot of work was done in the last long session. We saw that with the state budget, also with sports betting. And so the appetite that we know that the legislature has right now is for some very, very, very small targeted local appropriation. State revenue has come in a little bit over what the Department of Revenue expected. So there will be some funds that'll be there and that they'll be able to play around with. But the historic investment that we've seen over the past two budget cycles, I like to say has been like Christmas and this time will be more like Halloween trick or treat. So some things have certainly changed. Next slide here. So we've had a few topics, categories, economic development, public safety and quality of life that we focus on. And these all go along with our commitments. And so I'll just briefly run through these and take some questions here at the end. Interstate connectivity, city corridor improvements, equitable tax distribution, revision of bidding process and workforce development, public safety, the FPD Training Center, mental health response, violence intervention, firefighter cancer prevention and law enforcement retirement. Just to stop here for a moment. The stress that the legislature has put on cities like Fayetteville, specifically Fayetteville, is with what we are targeting, let that be targeted toward things that have a regional impact. Fayetteville being a regional hub of commerce. I'm coming from Laurinburg. Everybody, when they got their tax money back home, came to Fayetteville and rushed to spend it all here. And so there is a focus here. There is a focus here on regionalization. With the FPD Training Center, myself and Representative Smith have really been pushing this. I think this is one of those things that I call low-hanging fruit that we'll possibly be able to get the funding for, partial funding for when we return to short session. Quality of life, affordable housing, telecommunications expansion, stormwater improvements. We saw a number of investments there with PWC this last budget cycle, solid waste and transit facility, the MacArthur Road Sports Complex. I am reminded by the Mayor Protem, and I want to make sure I get this right, that the city of Fayetteville is the largest neighbor to the largest military installation in the world.
Yes, sir.
And we have been tooting that horn for a while and were able, was able to bring Senator McInnis down, who is the Chair of Senate Approbes and Policy Committee in the State Senate. And to give him a tour of that facility, we've been able to work with Jody and the entire team, Brooke, to bring the North Carolina Department of Natural and Cultural Resources into this conversation. And we are proactively pushing a $15 million appropriation from the feds and ORLAP funding. And how we've gotten to that point is when we identified a need, I had a conversation with the leadership at the Department of Natural and Cultural Resources, who said, "The folks from the feds, from the National Park Service, have been begging applicants from North Carolina to apply and we have zero." So Fayetteville is at the top of this conversation. And so we're really going to push hard for the MacArthur Road Sports Complex. Transit, Fayetteville route expansion, transit regionalization and passenger rail expansion. This has been something that's been caught up in conversation for the past year. We are making strides toward this. We have pushed continuous funding for the airport improvement program and the airport incentive program to open up new routes and new expansions as well. This is something that's benefiting all of our commercial service airports. Fayetteville continues with its robust marketing. I think we'll probably get to a place where the Mayor Protem and council would like to one day see that we have a direct flight to Washington DC. But we will continue to push that as well. So our next steps. Jody, I'll take this. And I'll come back with one quick thing.
All right. Thank you, John, we appreciate that. So I want to go over what happens next for you. You have already reaffirmed your commitment to the state action plan for the biennium last Monday. So that is a positive movement in the right direction. We will now begin to prepare and bring all of the information about those requests and those needs together so we can share that with members and make sure you all are very well informed about this so you can speak to that when you are engaging with our elected officials at the state level. And also, we want to make sure we include information about what we are doing and have done, the successes we have seen here in Fayetteville and the positive movement that we've already had in our city. And very tangibly, we will also begin now preparing to host our Legislative Breakfast. You all know we typically do that before the session begins. So session doesn't start until April. We will probably have that late March, early April so we can have enough time to engage in those conversations with the members of the General Assembly. And then if we're subject to any of your questions, I'll let John take the hard questions for you.
Thank you. Oh, go ahead, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. We had, I did want to add one thing. As, you know, our role here continues to develop to all members of council. I left my card for you, so if you need anything, please call me, my personal number is on there as well. But look at our role as a force multiplier. We are there to support the agenda of the city and to help push the delegation in the right direction and keep those things at the forefront of their mind.
Yeah. So I'm coming, Councilmember here and Thompson. So, John, good to see you, good presentation. So two things, one, I know it's always good to align with what the priorities of the majority party are. Okay, the General Assembly has said these things are important to them. What are they and how do they align with the things that are on our priority list?
So, right now, as I mentioned, we got a lot of business taken care of during the long session. Their priority right now is to get here, make some budget adjustments. There's possibility that we'll do a tech corrects bill when we get back. There have been some of the bills that have to do with vices such as casinos and marijuana. We don't know where those conversations will take us. And there has been a divided legislature on that, both houses have been divided on the issue. And so the legislature has not made known to us what is their appetite when we return. What we do know, because we're in short session, only a few things are even viable to even come up and are allowed to come up during the short session. Just so you all know, so that's local bills, finance bills, general appropriations, or any bill that has passed crossover. And crossover just means a bill that's already passed one chamber before a certain deadline.
All right. Secondly, so as they change the, you know, add in the new revenue from the sports betting, if there is any kind of revision to tax distribution, we want to make sure that we get our situation fixed. You know, of course Fayetteville is in a unique situation compared to anyone else in North Carolina to where the county gets all the other taxes, you know, food, hospitality, everything. So the only taxing ability we have is through property tax and sales tax. So if there is any conversation about that, as they recalibrate that, because I know they were going to take some pressure off in some areas with this new revenue, we want to make sure that's a great time to get a local adjustment to our local situation. So any thoughts on that?
I would add this, as our team, we were very much involved on the sports betting legislation. We represented the NBA, PGA, Major League Baseball. Is, that is only a fraction of revenue. We're expecting about $100 million when this thing grows. But with the other avenues of potential revenue, we do know that there probably will be a tax bill to address some of those things. What's also something to note for us is that while Fayetteville is having this conversation, other cities as well, like Greensboro, are also having this conversation. So when this time does come, I imagine that all of these things would probably be in one bill to get it done. When we're talking about taxes, especially with the majority party, that's going to always be a tricky conversation. That's always going to be something that's going to be very heated and political. But it's something that we've kept at the top of our agenda as your team and made sure that we keep track of. So as soon as we start to hear more on that, we'll certainly relay that back.
Okay, appreciate it. So Councilmember here and Thompson.
For what you do for us in Raleigh. And I know that one of our items is the regional, I mean, the transit regional, and I know that's mainly within this area. But when we look at, well, first, short session, what is a short session? How long is a short session?
April 24th to, yeah, so not long at all.
So as we move on into the fall with whoever, we were having these positions, as we talk about transit, not just regional, but from, my question, my concern from here to Ronald Reagan, which is, we have talked about, I don't know, 15, 16 years. What is it that we are doing wrong concerning that? That we can change to help support us?
I wouldn't say anything wrong. We've, I've had a number of conversations with the folks from some of America's biggest airlines about this. And having a regional conversation as well. But one of the things that has been focused is that Fayetteville continuously pushing toward filling all of the flights that are currently here, all of the routes that are already servicing Fayetteville Regional Airport. But also a robust marketing approach, which I've shared already with the Mayor Protem and with staff. And I think all those things have been going in the right direction so far. But when I think of the agenda, Councilmember here, is that this is one thing that has been kind of ingrained in my skull, that this is something that we have to get done. And so I think now we're having a conversation on this more than ever. The individuals at the Airport Association, our transportation chairs in both the House and the Senate, Senator McInnis, and along with our State House Transportation Leadership, knows that this is something that we want to get done for the city of Fayetteville.
Yeah, I just always wondered why we, I think if I look back years ago, I think it was what, United we had? United went, we had that straight shot, United. Was it Reagan or did it go to Dulles? It went to Dulles, well.
I would add that so much has changed in the industry since then that at one point, those flights that used to service areas like this, and Pinehurst used to also have commercial service through American Airlines, is that those planes sat 50 folks. Now they're 75. So can you fill 75 with, I don't know how many, a day? And I know that, you know, offers have been made, but they've been at terrible and awful times for service at the DC airports. And so I think as long as we continue to monitor the trends that's going on right now in aviation and continue to do what we're doing, I think we're going to finally get the result that you want.
Thanks, Mayor.
All right, Councilman Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, John. You know, as I sit here and listen to your presentation, it's a great presentation. Sometimes I listen to some of the key words and what you just got finished saying was things that we have to get done. Well, being retired military, I understand the effects of the things that we've been exposed to or places that we have been to. And I am going to do my best to emphasize throughout my term and terms on council that we need to take care of those who are taking care of us, whether it's staff or whether it's our first responders. And as I looked on the news one day, I seen a firefighter, who I believe was 58 years old, who had to have a ticker tape parade in front of his house because he was dying of cancer. As we talked to our new police chief, who was just awarded his position today, he talked about cancer prevention. As I looked on your slide, in the background, it had cancer prevention for firefighters. So what at the state level, what policies or laws are they making to help our firefighters who may suffer after they have retired?
What we did see was the extension of that pilot program. The North Carolina League of Municipalities and the Metropolitan Mayor's Coalition, which Mayor Cohen is a member of, has pushed for this. So that was also part of the budget as well, that we continue on with the pilot program. And through all of the other outside groups that have advocated for this, that we would return back to this conversation again. But this is a, I think, when it came, when it comes down to the conversation on cancer prevention, one of the things that was brought up by some of the smaller municipalities were about financial burdens. And so been trying to find a way that we can have a bill that everybody agrees to, that all municipalities are behind. But at least we know that the state is committed to extending on with the pilot program right now.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
All right. Councilmember Benevente.
Thank you, Mayor. This document, or these priorities, are something that were developed some years ago. Do you happen to recall when?
I wouldn't say some years ago. This was, I came and presented this before council, maybe, yeah, last year, last year, yeah, last year.
The reason I ask is because when I first came on council about a year and a half ago, there was already sort of this plan in place. And specifically, the conversation around a Fayetteville Police Department Training Center was something when we sat down at Segra Stadium with our state delegation, was already being presented. And there really wasn't an opportunity at that time for the new elected council members, myself, Mr. Thompson, Ms. McNair, Mr. Hondros, to really give any input on it. And even since then, our councils changed even more. Now the majority of us really haven't had a say on what these priorities are. And I think for the most part, they align. But there are some questions that I have about, you know, that item in particular because we're asking for three on the way to $27 million for that particular item. And
That is in which item?
Fayetteville Police Department Training Center. You know, and I've never said I wanted one. You know, I think the past council has. I think probably there's still plenty of council members who do. If we're going to have three to $27 million dedicated to that, I want to see something on the other side for preemptive stuff that doesn't necessarily go straight to the police department, but still improves our public safety. And we haven't really had a chance to discuss what that looks like to you. I know that there's mental health co-responder, violence interruption in here. But again, that's language that I think two councils previous, you know, were comfortable with and familiar with. This council has, you know, sort of in time, come to understand that the priorities are very different. We now said that we want an office of community safety specifically. We're going to be talking about that next, that even our strategic planning meeting, that's a particular priority. And we know how much money we want for that. So at what point are we going to get a chance to discuss that what's listed here needs to be updated so that when we're having conversations with our state delegation, we're coming from a more modern place and not necessarily from the understanding from two terms ago?
Okay. So just to hit that before Eastland does, so the lobbyist follows the direction that the board gives it.
Sure.
So I think that would be more of a decision if council wanted to re-strategize or amend that list. I don't know that Eastland has the answer to when that happens because some of the things that you say that you're concerned with, I don't know that that's been agreed upon or not, right?
We haven't had the discussion precisely.
So I think maybe, Mr. Eastland, as you addressed the councilman's question, give us the deadlines as to which changes can be made, in your opinion, or if there are things that need to be added or taken away, in your opinion.
Well, we're going back in short session in about six weeks now. This is what we have. What I don't want, councilman, is that we change midstream on this. But I think what certainly needs to happen is, I take my direction from council. What council tells me those priorities and their prerogative is, that's exactly what I'll push. Those are the conversations that we'll have with the delegation. So I think if we stick with what we have, because this is what we think if we stick with what we have, because this is what we've introduced to members last session, this is the conversation that we have with leadership in the last session. So I think, uh, if we can at least put all of our energy behind what we currently have and in, in response to the, um, Police Department Training Center, I, one of the things that we really pushed for when it came to, um, capital projects like that were things that were shovel ready, things that we knew what it looked like, how, how we wanted, how we wanted to serve the community, how we wanted to serve the region. And so when I spoke of earlier, regional impact, those are one of the things that were immediately brought up by council.
Right. But I think two councils before weren't necessarily aware of what happened in Atlanta with Cop City, right? And a lot of things that came out of that. And I think even right now, we haven't really had a discussion about, uh, what it looks like for us to have such a, a department training center here. Um, so what you're saying right now to me, sir, is exactly what they said to me last year. This isn't the time. We're committed to something. Um, so maybe it is a question more for us as a council to say, when are we going to finally have this conversation? Because I've kind of been told to wait about it two years now. Um, and now I'm being told I gotta wait, I guess, another year before we can have a in more in-depth conversation about this. Because I'm willing to have us go ask for all this money from the police department, but then I would like maybe for some of that money that we were otherwise going to spend on the police department to go towards maybe an OCS, maybe $3 million worth if we're going to get it from the state, that's perfect. But we haven't had that conversation and I'm not exactly sure how much longer of the expectation is that we go along with two councils previous when the majority of us really never spoke on any of this.
Well, I think two things. One is, um, Senator McKenna's was clear that, that the things they're going to prioritize are regional. So the training centers are regional, that other departments can share.
What if we had a regional, uh, center for social workers?
Right. But, but what I'm, I'm saying is...
Was there a regional center for...
Right. But I don't know that there, there's appetite for that in the region or your board, right? So I think that that's probably a, a separate meeting that we, we can try to get to, right? But that doesn't negate the fact that I think you still have a majority consensus, which we can reaffirm that today. The, the list is solid. We voted on it last week. And so we don't need to send mixed messages. If there's an adjustment or an add-on, I think that's a different conversation. But regionally, you got to understand that you not only would get whatever this board's opinion is, you have to have something that other areas in the region also is viewed that way. And I don't know that everybody's...
Right. So as an example, let's just all agree today, 10 out of 10, we want $3 million to be asked for from the state for a Fayetteville Police Department Training Center. That's what it said. No, that's what it says here. It says $3 million Fayetteville Police Department Training Center, right? We all said we want that.
So you gotta get, you gotta get to a question or comment.
All right. Do you have time right now to add another?
No, 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 don't worry.
Well, that's what I'm just doing.
So if you got, if you got a motion you want to submit, let me get all the speakers.
Let's do that.
And if you want to check the pulse, if the council was to change that list or not.
Yeah. Cause I think that was my understanding of why I didn't pull this from the agenda on the last meeting was because we said we were going to have this meeting and opportunity to do it.
We can have a conversation. You can pose a motion if your colleagues want to add a change or take away if you can. But I got a couple more speakers I'll circle.
Perfect.
All right. Councilmember Jensen.
So I'm, I'm going to go back, um, to us talking about our legislative agenda. So, you know, as we've sat here and heard say, you know, we, we know that we need to get this, um, flight from Fayetteville to Washington. This was four councils ago. Nothing moves fast in government and you have to stay slow and steady and stay in the fight. It started out, we would not even be having the conversation of getting a flight to Washington if we didn't do something about the airport. So what I will tell you, in 2013, we sat down and said, we need to do something with our airport. It's not bringing in economic development. We need to do something with parks and rec. We need to do a bond. We need to have this. So I, I think that we're getting ahead of ourselves. I think we are committed to this office that we're talking about, but we cannot skip over things that we have spent our time, our money, our lobbyists and our political will to get to, we are at, we're at the finish line and we can't pull back. This is, we got to give it our all to get what we've been working for, for so long. I understand the council has changed. I understand that. But if we pull back on this, it's going to take another eight years to get where we are right now. And I'm not prepared to do that. We can do both. But if we pull back, we are really putting economic development and quality of life on the back burner. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Jensen. Uh, Mayor Pro Tim, uh, Councilmember here.
Thanks, Mayor.
I know what we, I, I, I understand what we are presenting within this short session, which we are going through today. Uh, as we move into the fall and when our new, uh, members are in office, do we keep the same agenda lists that we have now or does that change after the short session?
That's a great question, Councilmember here, and that certainly would be the will of the council. What will happen after the short session closes and this biennium closes is we will restart the process again to re, recreate, if you will, the legislative agenda for the state for the next biennium. So we will go through that process much like we did the last one, and we will gather input from staff and provide council options of what we see as having been priorities. Some of those will still be on this legislative agenda. If we did not accomplish them, we certainly wouldn't want to just scratch them off right away. We will also look for anything new that has come up that you have expressed interest in or that is in your strategic plan or that council has said, we want to do this and prioritize that. Then we will go through the process of providing all of those options to you, council, for you to decide what you would like to include. What are those big topical areas? Are they the same? Are they economic development, quality of life? We will go through that whole process to give you different iterations of a legislative agenda. And then we will bring John back again to present that to you for formal adoption in December, January-ish, somewhere in there. That sounds about right, um, that you all will have another one for the next biennium, much like this. And then the following year we'll reaffirm the commitment to that, if that's helpful.
Yes, ma'am. Very, very helpful. And, and just to reiterate, and it's already been stated, and I know the council overall knows this, that whenever we set these, uh, these priorities, uh, we have to keep, we have to keep pounding it. We have to keep pounding it. And sometimes it takes time. Uh, it's not, uh, you put it on the agenda and it's done in a couple of months. Sometimes it was just stated, it takes years for us to just keep pounding it. And also what the appetite is in Raleigh and what the appetite is in Washington. And it's our lobbyists, uh, on the federal and the state level that keeps us aligned on what the appetite is in those two, uh, locations. But we have to just continue to stay forward. Thank you, uh, Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember here. Uh, Council, before we move on to, uh, to the next item, uh, Mr. Benevente, you had something?
Yes. Um, I think it should be, you know, it, it was obfuscated a little bit, but I want to make it clear. I don't think we need to upend 99% of this. So this, this assumption that I'm asking of us to start from scratch is, is bogus. I'm very much looking at one particular section, public safety. And I don't think many people here on this council could even describe what a coresponder model is or articulate exactly what that is. Because that's old language. We've been talking very recently about an office of community safety specifically. So, you know, we had Val Applewhite here with Josh Stein, Senator Applewhite here with Attorney General Stein just the other day. And on the microphone, she said, I'm looking forward to helping this city get an office of community safety going. So why is it that we're saying that we want to be in line with what our delegation is talking about and we don't have anything in here right now that meets that expectation? Um, I want to make a motion right now that we remove mental health coresponder model and we remove community-based violence interruption program, both of which are asking for $1 million. And we do what we've all agreed to, which is to fully fund an office of community safety for $3 million. So that would be my, uh, my motion is that we adjust public safety on this draft to ask for an office of community safety for $3 million as opposed to what it currently states.
All right. Motion by Councilmember Benevente is there a second?
All right. Motion, that's for lack of a second. Oh, who?
Hondros.
Okay. All right. Second by Councilmember Hondros, in discussion. Um, Councilmember Green, then I have something I did.
Two things I think I know, and I'll, if you want to correct me, feel free. I believe we have to have a strong and consistent message to the state over a long period of time. We've already begun discussions about a lot of things that we know are coming down the pipeline or coming across the western part of the state. We've already begun those discussions because we know they're important. And they're, they're important not for us in this time and space, but they're important for us down the road. So, um, in that line of thinking, while I am certainly behind the office of community safety, I don't think this is the forum or the way to go about that. That's just my personal opinion. I think that we need, um, and I don't think that it's something that, um, I know that Senator Applewhite's looking forward to that, but I don't believe that that's exactly what she meant. And I don't think that's something that's on the priority list for, um, this session and this short session, not from what I'm hearing and not from what you said today. Um, so while I love the spirit of your motion, that's the reason I'm not going to support it only today. But I am 100% behind the office. I just think we need to have a conversation about how it goes. And I know that's what you're trying to do, but, you know, that's all.
Thank you, Councilmember. Uh, Councilmember Benevente.
Yes, I, I just really wanted to make sure everyone is understanding the situation here. Um, we ask the state for money for things that we may not have in our own ability to pay for it. Um, we're asking them for certain things that we can articulate ourselves. And I'm not sure who on this council is going to articulate to our, um, delegation, anything about a coresponder model or violence-based interruption programs any stronger than I am. So why don't we use the language that is accurate? You know, these two concepts fall within an office of community safety. For us to be accurate about all this, after all that we've learned over the past two, three years, it only makes sense for us to meet what we're saying on this piece of paper that we said is our strategic priorities here, that we all voted on and agreed to, to match what we're saying to our state delegation. I, I, I think right now we're arguing semantics. And if we want to be clear with our delegation about what they want, what we've been lobbying them for privately, uh, up until now, we should make it clear on this agenda as well. So I, I haven't exactly heard a, an accurate, um, reason from anybody for why we can't make this update. But I'll, I'll look, look forward to the vote.
All right. And, uh, finally, I'd just say thank you, uh, to John and to, uh, Councilmember Benevente and, and to the comments that were made on this. Uh, I think we are mixing apples and oranges. One is, uh, they have a short, finite amount of time. Uh, he said that the, the consensus is that they don't want to be there long. Many of them are campaigning and running for office and that they're going to do very specific targeted things, which are, um, some local adjustments to bills and, um, some additional appropriations, if I understand that correct. Um, I think this is more of a larger conversation that you have to also factor in where the General Assembly is as a body. Uh, the Republican-led General Assembly has typically not been very open to certain things regarding, uh, some of these new innovative ways for, for, um, public safety. And I think that we are putting at risk some very certain things that we know we've committed to as a, as a, as a council. Um, we've capitalized it. We've put some investment in and we're asking for just some additional investment. So you're putting, you know, you're kind of throwing out the baby with the bathwater to, to have a, a long-term conversation in a short session period of time, in my opinion. So I'm not going to be able to support that. I am not necessarily saying I don't support the concept in general, but I just think that, that you're mixing two different things that really don't really go together. Uh, this is not the only opportunity to find funding for that in a, whatever way. We're bringing the state here, which is, again, that's probably the next meeting or another item. But that's the reason why you bring the state here is to say that, hey, we need some resources to support your program that your guys helping us with. So that is, uh, where I'll be on it. But I'll go to Councilmember Davis.
Yes. Uh, Councilman, can you, um, repeat your motion for clarification, please?
Absolutely. So presently, um, I move that we ask for an office of community safety to be a part of this agenda and replace that with the mental health coresponder, which is exactly what an office of community safety would conduct, and the violence interruption program, which is exactly what an office of community safety would oversee. Um, and accurately ask for the $3 million rather than the $2 that's currently here. I mean, it really doesn't hurt to ask y'all.
All right. Any other questions, comments? Good. All right. Counsel, look to you for your votes. Those in favor of the motion to, uh, amend the list and do it as stated? Show of hands, those in favor? All right. Those oppose are the remaining. So Madam Clerk, those voting in favor was, uh, Councilmember Benevente and Hondros. All right. Thank you, John. Oh, Councilmember Banks McGlough, are you there?
Yes, green.
Green. Okay. So it's a count, uh, three to seven.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
May I add this one thing? I would love to also extend an invitation to council and to you, Mayor, to, um, help us push this thing, um, in Raleigh as well. And would love to, um, welcome you up there at any time. Thank you, sir.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it. Good job. All right, counsel, moving to, uh, item 4.02 is the strategic planning debrief from Fountain Works.
Did we already adopt it?
You, you did adopt it on consent last Monday, so it is already going. But thank you, great question.
All right. Good evening, sir, or afternoon.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tim, Mayor Pro Tim and council. My name is Chris Lowry, the Strategic and Performance Analytics Manager, um, for the city. It's my honor to be here this afternoon. Um, today we have, uh, Ms. Julie here from Fountain Works. I remember her doing the strategic planning retreat, um, that we had earlier in, uh, late January. Um, she's going to do a brief overview of the strategic plan and the priorities that we had, uh, voted on during that session. Um, from that, I will follow back up with our next steps that staff plans to take, um, to get this brought back to you to be adopted and start to do the implementation with city staff. Um, so at this point in time, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Ms. Julie and she'll do our debrief.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tim, members of council. Thank you for having me back. I, um, wanted to share with you as a refresher and with your viewing public, um, to inform them what you did at your council retreat in late January and where you ended up with setting your strategic priorities. So at the retreat, you set out your intentions to identify a long-term vision for what you hope Fayetteville would look like or be in 10 to 20 years. You wanted to be aligned on your top strategic priorities to help move you in that direction of the long-term vision and to celebrate, celebrate the, um, high-quality achievements that the city has accomplished over the past few years. So we started the day by, um, celebrating those achievements and recognizing what you have done. You all spent, um, uh, you all recognized that it's really important to share with the public all of the good work that you and, um, the city have been doing. And that kind of set the groundwork for wanting to communicate better with the community about the long-term efforts you've been undertaking and the accomplishments you've made. We then looked, um, to envision the future and identify strategic goals and priorities and look at how partnerships are important in achieving those goals. And finally spent some time talking about how to measure success. So the primary outcomes were identifying some big vision themes. You identified collectively top five strategic priorities and then additional items that you discussed to be considered for the future. Um, for the vision themes, for what you want, uh, Fayetteville to be like in the longer term, vision is supposed to be aspirational. It's not necessarily what you are now, but the direction you're moving in. You want to make sure Fayetteville is known for a unique identity and you've had some discussions about what that unique identity should be. You want to make sure that the community has well-educated professionals and a population that reinvests in the community. You want your economy to grow and to invest in small businesses. You want Fayetteville to be safe. You want the leadership to be representative of the community. You want to be connected and accessible through rails and roads and transit. Um, you want to be a place where people love to live with a vibrant quality of life. And you want to maintain your strong relationship with the military and help keep the current population of young people wanting to stay in Fayetteville. So you use this vision to then set your priorities for what you should be focusing on in the short term to move in that direction. And you identified your top five priorities at the retreat. I'll go counterclockwise on this, um, diagram and start with a top priority was to have more comprehensive response to 911 calls. And that's the Office of Community Service as part of, uh, community safety as part of that. And it ties to the, um, strategic plan goal one that you've had in place for several years. Uh, you talked about... You talked about articulating and defining who the city is and telling your story in Fayetteville and beyond. You want people to, people and companies to know what Fayetteville is and want to come here and be proud of what Fayetteville is. That ties to the current strategic plan goal six, continuing around the circle. Tied to goal five, you talked about returning municipal assets to the tax rolls, specifically recognizing that to do all of the good things you want, you need more income for the city and by having more property taxable, that would introduce more income through property taxes to the city. And then you recognize that enhancing parks and recreation opportunities will enhance the quality of life in the community, so you want to put some priority into that. That ties to your current goal four. And then you want to maintain your commitment and strong efforts that you've had in revitalization and affordable housing. So, these were your top five priorities that will be used as guidance for the staff in developing their budget and refining the strategic plan to support what the council has recognized. In addition to these top five priorities, you discussed other items that were of importance to you all. You talked about more services for the homeless population. That was something where there was a lot of discussion about partnerships with other nonprofits and governments in the community. Across on goal two, you talked about continuing your efforts with job creation, increasing your tax base, and having a longer-term plan for economic development, for city growth. Again, wanting to build the, build the tax base so that you have more income coming into the city to support the services that you want to provide. Under your current goal three, you talked a lot about pedestrian improvements to make the city safer and more walkable, expanding city wi, uh, smart, sorry, smart city, expanding Wi-Fi citywide, and facilitating partnerships for entertainment attractions, both for your population, your residents, as well as bringing in visitors to Fayetteville to spend, spend their tax dollars. Under goal four, you talked about an interest in streamlining development processes for housing to make it easier for developers to build housing, particularly affordable housing, and then expanding transportation opportunities such as rail and air and bus options for the city to help bolster the economy. And then finally, under goal six, you talked about increasing government and community communication, that you know there's a lot of good work going on and you want the community to know about it. You also, we had, you'll recall, we had a lot of priorities, so just reminding you, your top five are the ones on this circular one. These other ones were discussed. You also talked about a few priorities that were already in progress, that you're already making movement on. One is the 911 call center. Another one is addressing neighborhoods that only have one way in or out, so looking at that. And then continuing your efforts at employee retention, recognizing the good work that employees are doing and that you want to keep, keep the employees so they can provide the good services to the residents. With that, that's the highlight and the recap of what you talked about. I'm going to turn it back over to Mr. Lowry to talk about how staff is going to move forward, and then we'll jointly answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Julie. So, today, we had a documentation of our priorities, which was our first step that we wanted to take to make sure that council understood the priorities that was voted upon at the retreat. From there, staff will start working with all of our SOT leadership, our directors, the departments that have ownership for some of these items, and start creating some action plans. So, we want to get actions in place, a plan of action that we can actually bring back to council to show how we're going to start moving these items forward. From that, we'll start looking at our resource allocation. So, that's from a financial standpoint, human standpoint, so actually having the workforce available to get the work done. From that aspect, we'll start creating KPIs. So, we want to make sure that we have measurements in place that we can show our progress going forward. We don't want to just implement a process or a program and then not have ways to measure that success. So, when we bring it back to you to present those results, we want to be able to say, hey, council, this is what you wanted to move forward, here's how we're moving it forward, and here's some of the progresses that we're making to move that forward. Next, we wanted to look at our communication and engagement. So, we want to be able to talk to our residents. We want to be able to talk to council. We want to be able to talk to our leadership team to be able to get results from them, be able to have that communication aspect and that engagement to make sure that we are doing things that our residents want. We know we had the resident survey recently, which will be coming back to council, and we'll be able to tie those two in together to make sure that we are accomplishing both what council wants and also incongruence with what our residents are asking for. The last step in that, second to last step, will be our formal adoption. So, my department, our office, will actually start working on creating this to get the finalized document before you for adoption. We've already started working on the one-pager. We wanted to make sure that everyone was in agreeance today with the priorities before we started digging too deep. We don't want to be wasteful of time. We want to make sure that we're doing everything as streamlined as possible. So, once we get that acceptance from council today, we'll go ahead and start moving that forward and try to get something back before council for adoption ASAP. The last step in that would be our reporting. We want to make sure that we're bringing that back to council on a quarterly basis, getting that out there for residents to see, so trying to make sure that we have items that are representative from what the strategic plan is showing and actually presenting that in a way that our residents will both be engaging and, I don't want to say entertained, but something that will be legible for them to actually want to read, to get that information from what council has desired. So, from that point, if anyone has any questions, comments?
All right. Don't worry, it's sending, this, this looks good, so we look forward to, as we start the budget process, to seeing how this lines up. And I guess you said it'll be a follow-up meeting to tell us about the targets for action or the, or the progress measures.
Yes, sir. We'll start working with the SOT, the leadership team, the directors. We'll start sitting down and having those one-on-one meetings to make sure we have the actions plans developed. From the action plan, we'll also develop KPIs and performance measures that we can actually start reporting back to council on a regular basis to make sure that we are moving that forward. You'll notice, you've seen the scorecard, we usually do it on a yearly basis. We're actually going to revamp that this year to make sure that we have a robust scorecard that actually shows the, the city as a whole, to make sure that they're, we're actually getting metrics in place that are relevant, that is important to both council and to residents at the same time.
All right, so just so, you know, this may be a question for you or not, just so we don't have the same budget time constraints that we did last year, when can we expect to start to see some of these, these areas, these steps?
So, we've already started on the one-pager. We can get that to you as soon as we run it through Mr. Hewitt and Mr. Yates and Ms. Jody. We'll run it through them, get approval from them. We can get that to you as a preview to see where we're moving towards. Starting as soon as tomorrow, me and Mr. Bray Boy will go ahead and start laying out the full document. We'll do it in a presentation mode, and from that, we'll actually bring you a full document. So, hopefully sometime early April, we can go ahead and get that preliminary stages rolling.
All right, Councilmember here.
Thanks, Mayor. Just want to make sure that I'm, I'm following correctly what Mitch, what the mayor just said. So, whenever you prepare those documents and what we're doing now, if everything is approved, accepted here, which it should, I feel like it should be, budget will be attached to those two, right?
If there's any resource allocations that we will need, that will come from that action plan. So, if we, if we see that we need resources to move those projects along, that will be developed out in those action plans.
That would help, yeah, a lot.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Hondros.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we accept staff's report on the 2025 council strategic planning retreat and debrief.
All right. It's Councilmember, the motion by Councilmember Hondros, seconded by Councilmember here. Discussion on the motion to receive the report. All right, those in favor, show of hands. Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin?
Green.
Green, all right. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good work. Thank you, good to see you again. All right, council, moving to 4.03, Cool Springs District. Ms. Bianca, you still hopping?
I am, I'm sorry, it's going to take a minute.
Oh, my goodness. Michael's at work at 2:00?
Good evening, Mayor and council.
Evening.
No, it's not evening, we got to get used to afternoon.
Oh, afternoon, afternoon, afternoon. Sometimes we stay here till night, all right? Don't you start.
All right, we're going to go probably back-to-back with 403 and 404 with Cool Springs. She's going to bring you to second quarter fiscal year, and then the, also the downtown night landscaping lighting plan. She'll just step up and do both of them. I present to you, Ms. Bianca.
Thanks, Michael. I might need some help over here. I'm sorry, do I hit the PowerPoint stuff and then we're going to, oh, this is me. Cool. All right, look at this. I mean, I was born, you know, in the 70s, so excuse me.
All right, now.
We're the Cool Spring Downtown District. We serve as the managing partner for the Arts and Entertainment District, but also for the Municipal Service District here in downtown Fayetteville. It's an absolute pleasure to be at the helm of downtown Fayetteville at this particular moment in time. I'm going to present to you a couple of statistics in regards to what we do to manage downtown Fayetteville, but also overall how downtown is performing as a key economic indicator for our downtown. So, by way of design and placemaking, we were stood up as an Arts and Entertainment District. Currently underway, we are looking at adding additional crosswalk paintings to both Hay and Roberson, so right there at the main threshold by the ASOM, and then, of course, over by Green and Grove Street where the new Bojangles is coming in. That's about 1,200 linear feet of crosswalks and about a $25,000 investment. It's really expensive to paint crosswalks and use thermoplastic paint in accordance with DOT standards. We're glad to do it, though, so we're going to refresh the existing ones down there, lean into the Ken Do brand colors, and then probably update it so it looks a little bit more modern. You'll see that forthcoming, hopefully, in the next couple of weeks. We also submitted a budget request. You guys might remember back in 19, there was very few Christmas decorations in the downtown district. We work alongside Michael Gibson's team at Parks and Rec, and of course, alongside of the city council. I don't know if you've noticed, but I certainly have. Downtown looks great during the holidays. We twinkle a little bit more. We've got a Christmas tree, we've got new placemaking initiatives, so we'd like to see a little bit more of that come forward. We want to make sure that we're touching all the nodes of our downtown district, and so we're asking for some skylines and then some more photographic moments. You should see that forthcoming in Michael's budget, I believe. Also, you guys have been thinking about lighting, I've been thinking about lighting. I think these are low-cost interventions. Working with a company out of Vancouver, Canada called Limbic Media Group, this is a proposal to uplight the Hay Street parking deck. The investment is around $30,000. I bet I can fundraise for half of it if you could match me on the other. Those are dogwoods that are scattered on the other side, I just want to point that out, that is movable, and those lights do change as the seasons change, so we could celebrate the Ken Do brand, we could celebrate patriotism, we could celebrate pride, we could celebrate Jewish heritage, whatever we're interested in celebrating, we can do so with these light-changing features that are available on an app. Anyway, we really like this project, about a 50% investment into the tech itself and then a 50% investment into the construction and bringing that forward. Also, you know, we're really thinking about how do we live into our brand as a downtown district. In a couple of weeks, you'll probably see something come forward about rewriting the flag and banner policy, which we've been working alongside Parks and Rec and ACM Oliveria for this for a bit now, wanting to see this policy come forward in a more livable fashion, right? How can we use our brand standards to implement and tell a message to our community? Who are the people that say the message? We are one of those people for you. So, we'd like to see some implementation with broader crosswalks investments here. So, we work in placemaking, we also do events. You guys probably most notoriously know us for events here. We also communicate across seven or eight different platforms. We have a total reach of about 50,000 followers on, every, every day. And then last, last December, we had 72,000 people come to our website, which for Cool Spring Downtown District, a tiny little nonprofit, right, was a 750% increase. We all think that's because of New Year's Eve, by the way. This is our fourth, yes, Kathy?
I've just said yay.
Oh, oh, woo-hoo, I feel it, okay. That's all Lauren Falls over there, Director of Marketing and Events. She's just absolutely wonderful at her job. This is our Fourth Friday schedule. What we've noticed is that our Fourth Friday attendance has really increased over the years, so working alongside the Special Events Committee, we have put in for some additional road closures. We want to make it safe for our vendors. I don't know if you guys know this, but every Fourth Friday, we're averaging about 15,000 people downtown, and they just keep getting better and better. And actively, over the last few years, we have grown vendor participation from 30 vendors to about 90 vendors. So, it looks a lot different than it used to. It provides artists an opportunity to come forward, it celebrates our cultural community, and it gives people an opportunity to gather, right, and enjoy policies like the social district that you have passed. Coming soon for us, just to highlight some things, we have the Sassy Lassie Trolley, which is where we partner with a local comedic group, and we put people on a trolley and we tour them around downtown in the Haymount District. That's a super fun event. And then, of course, we have the Juneteenth Jubilee coming forward, just for one day this year down at Festival Park. We're currently in negotiations with a very known name to bring forth a great headliner. We also have booked one headliner, but I think we should reveal it all as a package deal, so we're going to wait. And then Fourth Friday, of course, returns this particular March, so look forward to that in partnership with the Walk a Mile in Her Shoes. I hope all of you council members come out, wear those little red shoes and prance down Hay Street. That's really important to support the domestic violence initiatives here in our community. That's a great way to do so.
I think that we should challenge all the gentlemen.
You know, Mayor Protim, I am with you, girl, yes.
To put on their red shoes and go down and support women.
I think you're on to something. Can we get a motion?
Yeah, I think that would be a great thing, a great statement during the month of March to do.
Also, we manage, oh, he said he'd think about it. They have, the shoes come in all sizes, so your feet wouldn't be constricted like Cinderella or anything. Okay. We also manage what's called the Safety and Engagement Ambassador Program. These are basically like a set of guys that work seven days a week. They are the concierge of the street. They walk around picking up litter, they establish relationships with our homeless population, they establish relationships with our business community. They're just wonderful folks to have around. They manage the Hurley pots, right? Every major metropolitan in the state of North Carolina has one, and so do we. They're on duty seven days a week, covering about 70 hours of time a week. We love having the ambassador program, and we are excited to do so. If you want more information, I'm happy to provide daily reports to you on what the ambassadors do. And then there's downtown development, this is sort of my brainchild, right? So, we have about 4.1 million visitors that come to the downtown district. That 4.1 million visitors come to downtown Fayetteville. 4.1 million visitors. Those are really good numbers. Our downtown represents about 2 million square feet of building stock, an average market lease rate of about $18 a square foot. I want to point out here, where you can see under construction, there's zero square footage under construction, that is because our permitting department in the city north of county reports to CoStar data, and that is something that we should definitely change, because these statistics are used to inform very important real estate decisions by outside developers. CoStar marketing is important. Anyway, we also track business opening closures, and so just to give you a snapshot here, we had four new businesses, and this report closed out on December 1. So, we had four new businesses that opened up in Q2, and then nine new businesses that were in the pipeline. Some of that has shifted since then. Just recently, Taste of West Africa, a longstanding business that has been, you know, opening for a long time, has recently celebrated an opening. So, if you haven't seen Isabella on Person Street, please go by and celebrate her. We're tracking investment, too, mostly public and private investment above a half a million dollars. What you'll see here is that we have over a million gross square feet of construction planned, completed, or underway since 2017. A million square feet of construction planned, completed, or underway. And that's in that Half Mile District that I'm talking about, and that's over half a billion dollars in public and private investment in that Half a Mile District. Those are beautiful numbers, you guys should all congratulate yourselves.
Yeah, that's one.
Also, the district has partnered with the Office of Community and Economic Development as well as the FCEDC to complete a hotel feasibility study for downtown Fayetteville. We're very excited about this project, we're about at the halfway moment, so you should probably see some activity come out of our offices in the next few weeks to report out to you on this. I'm going to talk to you in a bit about this lighting feasibility study. We also want a grant to do a strategic plan, to plan not only for the organization but also for the district, and that's currently underway. And just recently, to support the sort of lull that happens in retail, local retail, the local retail economy, in the winter months, we launched the Downtown Dollars Campaign, which we ran a print of these, they're basically like $5 bills that we pass out to folks on base and then at our local attractions, and then folks can go and spend those at our local retailers. And that's just something that comes directly out of our budget to support the economy of our local businesses in downtown Fayetteville. We love this program, it's wildly popular. So, that's all I have. Do you guys have any questions about the Cool Spring Downtown District?
All right, Councilmember Bahir.
Yes. Well, Ms. Bianca, how are you?
I'm excellent. I'm excellent.
Always, you always give a good report, well...
Uh-oh.
You always give a good report, and thank you.
It's been a biennium since I've been here.
Uh, you mentioned something, and I was, uh, looking for it in here, but you mentioned that some improvements with our, with, uh, the, the flag and banner.
Yes, sir.
Was that only for the downtown district?
Uh, that's citywide. The banner policy, though, mostly is, um, focused on downtown, is that correct? Downtown, but the flag policy would be citywide.
Well, the reason that I said that is because we just, we dealt with this, the banner, um, the, the flags. And it was a big deal because we didn't have it, and then it left, and then we, I think the mayor and I worked on it to bring it back and, and helping our small business, because I would love to see what that looks like, because we have something in place with that already.
You do, actually, so we're expanding it to make it, um, I think, more communicative.
Yeah, well, we'd like to see that.
Great, looking forward to that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember, uh, Mayor Protim.
Um, so, thank you for the report, Bianca. Bianca, how long have you been here?
It'll be five years in the very near future, almost a half a decade, I know, right? Time flies, it still looks so good though.
So it was five years when the Cool Springs started, 12?
Cool Springs started in 17, I joined in 19.
Okay. But it was just kind of, it really picked up when you got hired and...
And Lauren, and Ashanti.
Yes.
The, the team came together.
The women came together and made it happen.
Correct, there you go.
Sorry, you just made that one so easy to say. You just made that so easy to say. So, in, in my understanding, you know, when this all started, it was the city of Fayetteville that helped start, moved this and funding it and things like that, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. And so did I hear, and I, and I think I might have misheard, 4.1 million visitors a year? Is that what I heard?
That is correct, yes.
That come down to downtown?
Downtown.
Yearly?
Yearly.
Okay. Alright.
I can pull that data on any given day at any geographic location within our county, too. If you wanna geek out with me, just let me know.
And, and what did we start out as?
Uh, so we started at around 3.8, around 17. We did go up to 4.2 the year after COVID, so we had a little bit of a rise, because everyone was like, "Woo-hoo, no more COVID," right? So I think we've come back down to a more natural level, right?
Okay. Alright, perfect. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Alright, uh, Councilmember Davis, yours was...
Yes, sir, I'm just ready to make a motion to accept.
Ready to make a motion, okay. Alright, um, before you go into that, it was something, I didn't write down my question. I'll catch you on the next one, your next presentation.
Okay, sounds good.
Alright, Councilmember Davis.
Yes. Uh, I'm moved that we accept the quarterly report from the Cool Springs Downtown District.
Alright, so motion to accept the report, seconded by Councilmember McNair. Discussion, I'll stick my question in there.
Got you.
Is there any plan to expand the crosswork, uh, artwork, maybe to the area, the target area, where we're doing the Merchants in Choice? Um, because, you know, we're putting in 69 million, we've got HUD that, that will do up to 41. It'd be great, as we worked on beautification where the park is and with senior center, that we could...
Yeah, we could absolutely look at that. Just let me know exactly which intersection you're talking about, and we can go from there.
Okay. Alright. Any other discussion on the motion? Alright, council, I'll look to you for your votes to receive this. Alright, Councilmember Banks, McLaughlin?
Green.
Alright.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
And then nighttime, nighttime landscaping, which is just a fancy way to talk about architectural lighting, or how do we make things look pretty and twinkle at night, which is a great subject, right? So in, um, October, uh, you guys at the Quarter Revitalization Committee were talking about, let's enhance our gateways with better lighting, which is definitely a huge trend we're seeing, you know, around the globe right now. We love this idea. It was punted, if we wanna focus on downtown gateway li- light, lighting, give it to the Cool Spring Downtown District, let them go out and get some bids. So that's exactly what we did. Uh, the desired project is right within our Municipal Service District. We wanna focus not only on safety lighting, but also on artistic and aesthetic lighting. We're looking for very specific design elements, right, something that's fun and catchy, but we also wanna stay within budget. This is the Municipal Service District or your Arts and Entertainment District boundary, where you're talking about a half a square mile, 2 million, uh, square feet of building stock. Um, your Parks and Recreation Team went out and did some analysis to find out what other cities are paying for such, uh, studies. You can see they have a big range, right, anywhere from 45,000 to 200,000, which a lot just depends on the type of deliverable you're looking to get. Um, we did a request for information as a nonprofit organization. Um, we went out and we specifically reached out to companies. Um, back in November, we received two proposals, uh, on behalf of this effort. One of them was Optima Engineering, which is based out of both Raleigh, Asheville, and Charlotte, North Carolina. They do really beautiful work. Um, their expert, their expertise is sort of corporate lighting. They tend to do a lot of sort of uni-med stuff, right, working in university medical environments. Um, and then we have Lumen Tender. You should have those proposals within your budget. The Optima came in at $67,000, and then Lumen Tender is a company based out of Miami, Florida. I would say Lumen Tender is much, uh, more creative. If you're looking for something that, uh, deals with using gateway lighting in more of an artistic form, Lumen Tender's the way to go, it's my personal opinion there. They came in at $75,000. They do projects across the globe. I just spoke to the guy the other day, he was in Dubai. Uh, but he also just recently, uh, did some work in UNC, uh, and then also lit the bridge up in Wilmington, which is the colorful bridge you see at the bottom. Um, so I guess what I was wondering, you know, Michael, are we asking for direction in, at this particular moment to move forward with the lighting feasibility study project? Are we asking which team you wanna work for, Kelly?
So, that would be part of the MSD, and it'd be something moving back with the budget.
Right.
As far as funding.
Okay. So I guess the question then is, do you want to move forward with the lighting study?
Well, of course I do. I, I brought, um, the one item, because I hear it all the time, and when you're in different places, it just gives a feel like the vibrancy is there, even though it's just buildings that you already have, and it just brings a whole different, uh, whole different atmosphere to, to, uh, to the area, so, um, brought this, it was just originally for the, for the parking decks, but I do love this, and particularly if Wilmington can do this, uh, the way this is lit up, you know, in Durham, you have a bridge that goes, you know, Mario City Durham has a bridge that you would go to that has, uh, it turns Durham blue, uh, or at least it's blue on 147, I believe it is, Durham Highway. But, uh, I think this is something we need to do, that we can start to look like a city, so, looking forward to it. Council, any other comments, question? Alright, uh, so what do we need to do, Ms. Kelly? I know you, you're not looking for money today, you're looking for, uh, what, what do you need, uh, Bianca? Embracing of the concept?
I think we need to embrace the concept and say we'd like to move forward, but also, Kelly, maybe you could provide me some guidance here, because the companies have been waiting since November when they submitted their proposals to learn whether or not this will move forward. So, you know, like Kathy said earlier, nothing moves quickly in government, but all of them have been asking what our next steps are.
So, we would have to go back and identify budget if we're going to do anything this fiscal year, sir? Um, so my recommendation would be to take it through the budget process to start July 1.
Right, so I guess, uh, maybe if there's a consensus that, that we like it, like the concept, then I guess during budget time, you'll tell us...
Absolutely, sir.
Which checkbook you'll be writing it out of?
Yes, sir, I already know that, but we have to see what the balance is.
I got you.
But yes, we will, if you could provide some consensus that this has received the report, and that is, this is something that you would like for Bianca to flesh out a little more, and provide staff with additional, um, information as far as specifics of the projects. If there's a certain project that you would like to focus on, of the three she presented now, that would give us a firmer dollar amount that we would know to proceed with. Um, but if it's just in general, we can come back with all three proposals when we do the MSD.
Well, I think we won't know where we are budget-wise, I mean, so, so maybe, council, if there could be a consensus to, you know, to accept the concept, and then I guess with budget time, they'll give us option A, B, and C? Okay, well, I can't make it from, as a chair. Alright, alright, so, uh, motion by Councilmember, uh, Haddros, I think, him and Thompson tied for it, and seconded by Behr. Discussion on that? Alright, council, those in favor, show a hand. Councilmember, uh, Banks, McLaughlin?
Green.
Alright. Alright, thank you, Ms. Bianca.
Thank you, guys, I'm really excited about it all. Thank you for this opportunity.
You're welcome, thank you. Uh, council, moving to item 4.05, Stormwater Development Ordinance, Functional Maintenance Responsibility. Uh-oh. I gotta go to the bathroom for this.
Alright. Uh, so today we're gonna talk about, um, Stormwater Control Ordinance, or Development Ordinance, and particularly the functional maintenance of residential subdivision stormwater control measures. So, what we're coming before you today is, there is a policy decision that is needed. Um, at last Monday's regular meeting, council approved a text amendment, um, removing Section 23, 33B dot 5, which was requiring a payment into a maintenance fund. Uh, this was to bring our ordinance in line with, uh, state general statute changes, um, from last fall. Uh, so now we're coming before you at the work session, um, to seek concurrence from council to amend the ordinance by removing all of City Code 2333B. Um, this essentially would end the process for turning over functional maintenance responsibilities of single-family residential stormwater control measures, uh, to the city.
Question?
Yes.
Then, then, then where does it go? If, and, and, because this has been a big topic matter, I didn't want us to kind of blow white paths and, uh, and especially when we talk about the, 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 the ponds. Then where, I mean, where does it go? I mean, who, who, who's gonna be the responsible? Who's, who, who's taking the responsibility of it? Who's gonna be, who's gonna be maintaining, who's gonna be maintaining? Because I, every now and then I run across one of these completely built.
And if we're taking that out away from, from the city, then where does it go?
So, these are, these are privately-owned stormwater control measures, so the, the functional maintenance responsibility would fall on the owner of the SEM.
Okay, then, when a new development is built, and they put in their own retention pond, that responsibility from henceforth and forever remains on that development?
It may, yes.
And that contractor?
Well, not the contractor, it's the owner. Um, so with these residential subdivisions, it would be the developer and/or the HOA.
Okay.
So...
Alright, thank you.
Did, have you finished your slides?
That's what's the first slide.
It just got started, sir. I just didn't want him to get past that, because that's such a big issue for me.
Alright, DJ, let him live.
Yeah, I'm trying to let him live.
I can run through this quick as you want, man.
Yeah.
My understanding is that we all received this document well ahead of the meeting. Um, I was gonna make a motion to amend the ordinance to remove all City Code Section 23-33B.
Right, uh, so, council, uh, you know, typically we can, how many slides you have, sir?
10 or 12, but I can run through them.
But, let's, let's, let's hear about it, he's worked and prepared, I, I do agree to read ahead, but, but all of this is state compliance, there's been changes in statute, so you're updating a lot of it, right?
Well, that, that was last Monday, that was to, uh, bring it in line with general statute. This is, uh, kind of a follow-up policy decision needed.
Okay, alright. We'll keep going, we'll, 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 we'll move on now.
Alright, so just quick, I'll run through these quickly. So YSEMs, if you look at the picture on the left, that's, uh, Hope Loop Road, so that's a aerial from, or the early 2000s. Um, the one on the right is one from a couple of years ago, so you can see as development comes to the city, there has to be stormwater control measures to, uh, manage the stormwater generated from these developments. Uh, just quick stages of development, you've got a vacant lot, you then dig an erosion sediment control basin. Uh, when the subdivision is built out, you convert it to a stormwater control measure. Uh, these residential subdivisions, they're all, um, stormwater ponds. Quick stages of a basin, you have erosion sediment control basin on the left, you can see there's no plants. On the littoral shelf, there is sediment built up, that's what it's for, it's to collect the sediment as the homes are built in the subdivision. Uh, middle picture, you see the conversion, uh, where the sediment's cleaned out and they plant the plants, and then on the right, you have a functioning stormwater control measure. These stormwater control measures, they are constructed by developers, they are owned by the developer and/or the HOA, and these stormwater control measures collect, treat, and storm, stormwater runoff generated solely by the development. So, this is what the current ordinance looks like. You'll see I marked out Section 5, which, uh, City Council, um, adopted last Monday. But this just sets out the provisions in which a, um, single-family residential, um, development can turn their ponds over to the city for functional maintenance. So just quickly, housing SEM transferred, um, you would have a, a recorded operation and maintenance agreement, you'd have a drainage and access easement that's provided. The basin is then converted to a stormwater control measure once you have 75 to 80% of the subdivision built out. Uh, you then get, uh, record drawings and engineer certification, which are your ASBILs. Uh, we then go through an inspection to make sure that the pond is functioning as it's designed. Then you start your one-year warranty period, uh, over that time, the developer pays the inspection fee. After a year, you do an annual inspection, the city goes out there and does another, uh, final inspection. It was, it was a 20% payment, and we no longer are allowed to, to require that. You then do a transfer maintenance responsibilities agreement, and then the bonds release. So, a couple considerations. Providing, providing functional maintenance for privately-owned residential SEMs is unique to Fayetteville with respect to peer communities within North Carolina. In North Carolina, there are six Phase 1, uh, communities. Durham does not take these on, Raleigh does not take these on, Winston-Salem does not take these on, Greensboro does not take these on, Charlotte does not take these on unless it's by a petition. Again, the general statute, um, 160D 925 prohibits the city from requiring developers to make payment to a city-maintained maintenance fund. So as the ordinance currently reads, um, it, it opens us up to a lot of potential risk and additional responsibilities. Right now, as the ordinance reads, we will have to take these ponds over without any kind of funding mechanism set up for us to do that functional maintenance long-term. Uh, currently, the city is responsible for functional maintenance of seven residential stormwater control measures. So, since the inception of our ordinance in 2009 to now, there's been seven ponds that have been turned over to the city, so they went through that real long flow chart I just discussed. Currently, there are 44 permitted basins. None of those 44 permitted basins have paid into the maintenance fund. So, if they met certain criteria, those 44 permitted basins would be able to be turned over to the city with no ability for the city to, um, perform that, or no funding mechanism currently in place to do that maintenance. Again, here's just a little bit of background, we looked not only in North Carolina, but, uh, throughout the region and several similar municipalities or sanitation districts. So there are some places in the United States that do take on this functional maintenance. Uh, the city of Austin does, uh, but they're mostly Texas and Kentucky, but nowhere in North Carolina, um, outside, like I said, Charlotte, that does it by, uh, petition, takes these ponds on for functional maintenance. It is the responsibility of the developer and/or the HOAs in these municipalities. So essentially, what we're trying to do is just do away with 2333B altogether. Um, so, our recommendations and our next steps, um, and this is the staff and the SWAB recommendation, we did take this to SWAB back in December, um, is that, um, to remove Section 2333B altogether. So, single-family residential developments would ha- would not have the option to turn over, um, the functional maintenance to the city. Developer and HOA would be responsible, um, and they would have to fund these O and M activities by the establishment of an escrow account. We already have that process in place in our ordinance, we don't have to do that. Um, so essentially, we're seeking, seeking consensus to bring a text amendment at the March 25th, uh, regular meeting, um, to do away with this practice. And that was it.
Sure, alright. Yeah, and I had one, too. Councilmember Thompson?
I have a legal question. If we can no longer make the developer responsible, 10 years pass, who is to reassure that he will come back and fix the SEM? And who can make him?
I think you know the answer to that, sir. No, there's no reassurance and no authority for the city to require, uh, contractor to do that.
So my next question, Byron, would be, if there is no HOA and there is no developer, who does the burden follow?
Somebody still owns that pond. And so, your, your stormwater ordinance currently, currently has, oh, sorry. So somebody owns the pond. It, they, just 'cause the HOA goes afunk, or somebody doesn't take care of their stuff, somebody still owns it. Um, you actually do have in your stormwater ordinance enforcement, um... Hold on, sorry. Enforcement and appeals. Um, so, a big part of your, of the city's MPDS permit, um, in this next permit cycle is post-construction. And so, these HOAs should be doing an inspection annually and sending in to us. If they're not, then we should be going out there and doing inspections annually. Um, if there's something that is not right, then they're in violation of your stormwater development ordinance. We could, if you go down that process, issue violations. Um, and there, there is sections in your ordinance, and I'm probably not prepared to get in great detail in it, but, um, there are procedures in your, your development ordinance for enforcement of violations.
Now, I understand we cannot maintain what has already been developed. So who is to, not determine, but who is to make sure that these new developers have an HOA, so it isn't somebody's name?
So, we actually, so we actually have a declaration of covenants that these developers, they, they record, this is their operation and maintenance plan, and it, it requires them to set up an escrow account and provide a, a funding mechanism for it.
But that's just a one-time funding, because after the one-year probation, they're no longer responsible.
Funding into the escrow account, if, if, if funds are pulled out of that escrow account, they should be put back in.
That means it'll always be there?
It should, if the HOA...
You keep saying "should." That's, that's not, that's not definite. I guess it goes unanswered, Mr. Mayor, but I'm, thank you.
All right.
Councilman Mahendros?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the question or concern I had last Monday, when we had the other cleanup items to the stormwater ordinance. So, being the only municipality of the top six that have a Phase One MPDS permit from the state of North Carolina that accepts these SEMs, so if we want to change this to where the city would not accept them, I'm not so married to it. But the other thing that we do, that the other five municipalities don't do, is the one-year warranty period. So, as Mr. Reeve just stated, with the renewal of our new MPDS permit, there's going to be more priority on post-construction inspections. So, it makes the one-year warranty period redundant.
Right.
So if we're going to do away with this, let's do away with that at the same time.
Yeah. Okay. Well, it's my turn. Yeah, I mean, I, I am kind of following, you know, like, you gave us which cities take over the functional maintenance, but I didn't see a comparison of the requirements that we have on the front end. You know, we go through a lot, make, put up bonds, one-year warranty periods, inspections, and those kind of things. And this has been an ongoing issue. So, I think if we're going to take our hands off "this is your responsibility" approach until it fails, that, that you have to clean up all of that, because it can't require people half of, you know, half of the requirements. And then, on the other hand, you're saying that we're no longer responsible. I think the state is doing some revisions with homeowners associations, so that's going to change, I believe, quickly, about what powers they have and, and do not have. So you'll probably see a lot of changes in that respect. And they're going to continue to change the stormwater, take the power out of municipalities. But I, I would like to say, just as a point of context, how many of these systems that we're currently responsible for, that you've listed, have failed?
None.
None. Last 10 years?
Your ordinance was in '09, so the, the seven basins that we've taken on for functional maintenance have not failed.
So nothing has failed, after two hurricanes, 500-year storms, and all of that. So, we put these requirements way up here, we made them bond real high, and now that we're trying to level this off and say this is your responsibility, I think, unfortunate, but the chances that the city's going to have to compound this money since 2009 and hold it, just in case something fails, and nothing has failed. You know, not saying tomorrow, all of them can fail, but I, I just think that it's not as big a risk as we say. We just need to, need to put more emphasis on the, make sure that it's maintained by, by enforcement side, so. All right. Mayor Protem?
Agree, agree.
All right. All right. Councilman Benaventek, you was ready to do this a minute ago. You have any questions, or want to move this forward?
Second.
I didn't get a second, so if my motion can die, and he can start one. I move that we accept the, have staff move forward with these revisions, including or in addition to the removal of the one-year warranty period.
All right. Is there a second to that? Second, and my counsel member Green. All right. Discussion? All right. Those in favor, show of hands. Oh, okay. I didn't see, I'm sorry.
Move the one-year warranty. What happens if we have a hurricane within that one year?
Well, I think what you're saying is that the ordinance says the owner's responsible, and then the one-year warranty is saying be responsible for one year.
Well, the one-year warranty says that the developer would still be responsible for that one year. They're the one that built it. They're the ones responsible for that one year. Their one year doesn't expire. Their, their, their guarantee doesn't expire, expire until after that one year. So the developer will still be responsible if something happens to it within that one year.
But I think what he's saying is that at some point during the course of the construction and after it's complete, somebody owns it.
Right.
And so the ordinance says whoever that person or entity is, is responsible for its failure.
I got that, but why would you put that burden on that entity for that one year, when you could put it on the developer?
Well, I'm saying, until they transfer it over, right? That if a developer's doing a neighborhood that's not complete, and he hadn't turned over his final plat to get approved, it's still his, until it's, until he turns it in, until he turns it over.
I don't think you understand what I'm saying, Mr. Mayor.
No, I get, I get what you're saying, but I'm saying, even at the interim construction and at the conclusion, I think somebody is still the owner or responsible party of it. Even if a guy's developing a neighborhood and selling off lots, he still holds that until, until the completion of it.
Right, until all the lots are sold.
So there's no point where there's no one owning it?
Ownership, I guess is what...
Yeah, that's what I'm...
Either, either as a developer, the developer owns it, or once the developer turns it over, the new owner owns it, whether that's an HOA, or individual lot owners, or homeowners, whatever that looks like. But somebody is a owner of record.
Right. All right. Mayor Protem?
So, just to go back to Councilmember Thompson, I think, I think in your situation, and what you're talking about, is what I have a lot in my area, is there are HOAs that were built, and everybody's gone. I mean, they're just gone. There's streets that they're in charge of, and the people are 70, 80 years old. And so, this is kind of, let's go back to apples and oranges. It's, I understand where you're coming from, because you got annexed, like, quick, like I did, and it's just different situation.
All right. Any, any questions, comments on, on that? I think at the end of it, Councilmember Thompson, the, the ordinance catches whoever the owner of it is. I think it's what, what he's saying is redundant, because of... All right. Counselor, I'll look to you for action on those adjustments. All right. All right. Councilmember Banks McGlaugh?
Red.
All right. Those voting opposed, it's Banks McGlaughlin here. Thompson, you read or green? Green, okay. All right. So motion carries. Thank you, Byron, and then we'll keep, keep plugging our way at it. Thank you, Stormwater Committee, too. I know y'all spend a lot of time, this is complicated stuff, so we appreciate what you're doing. All right. Feval Day Resource Center, DRC. Where are those ladies at? They came in the elevator with me. I said, I was surprised they were still talking to us right now.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Mayor Protem and City Council. It's a privilege to stand before you this afternoon with our community partner, Cumberland Health Net, to talk to you about the five-month part mark at the Day Resource Center. At this time, I'd like to introduce Ms. Shelley Hudson, Executive Director. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Ms. Hudson.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Mayor Protem, council members. Thank you.
Yeah, pull it down. There you go.
Didn't want to break it. Thank you for inviting us here. First thing I want to note is that on the presentation, it says a six-month update. I'm giving it to you at six months, but the results are five months. It's August 21st through January 31st. Just hit Enter. So, as you all know, we opened the Day Resource Center, opened August 21st. Our contractual agreement, the hours are nine to five, and it covers three FTEs. And the services are listed on the page. The ones that are underlined are the services that are provided through our contractual So let's look at the results. So, to start with, we've served 991, that is, unique individuals. So those are individuals that have come to, the first time that they have come to the center. And so how we ensure that we're not counting them twice, is the first time they come through, they complete a registration form, we put that information into a database, and then if someone else comes in, if they come in again, we're able to check it to make sure that that is the correct number. So that's 991 unique individuals. So you might be thinking, well, you've seen the point-in-time count where that's averaging, like, 475 unsheltered individuals. But what I want to say about that is that the point-in-time count is one day a year for a 24-hour period. And so, and we are in an area where we see a lot of transient, unsheltered come through, because we're near 95, as well as we're seeing that there's more individuals sleeping in their cars than have been in past times. So, the, and then we've had over 5,000 that have actually come through the center, and that is, of course, a duplicated number. We've had over 1,500 showers, 1,700 loads of laundry, clients successfully reunified. What that is, if, if someone comes in and is unsheltered, and they have someplace that they can go, either outside of the county, outside of the state, they may have a family member, or another shelter, or rehab place, we will buy them a bus ticket and send them there. Of course, before we do that, we verify that there is someone on the other end that will receive them. We will not just send them from our, from homelessness here to somewhere else. And then Manna provides lunches, and they've done almost 17,000 meals. Community partners. So we currently have 14 community partners. Those are community partners that have signed a memorandum of understanding with us, that they have agreed to provide consistent services at the Day Resource Center. And those community partners have provided 563 hours on-site, work hours on-site. We have three clinical partnerships. We have Goshen, Mobile Yen, we just started My Virtual Physician, and then Cumberland Health Net. We have RN Care Managers that are on-site as well. What I also want to point out is that the in-kind support. So, we have received 11,000, a little over $11,000 in in-kind donations from community partners, private sector, nonprofits, faith-based organizations, and then 635 and a half hours of in-kind support. The in-kind support hours is not volunteer hours. That is, if a community partner comes in, like we had a community partner come in and do a coat drive, so we would count that as in-hours of in-kind support. And we've had a little over 462 volunteer hours. What I want to point out about that, that is really amazing, I think, is that we have had several clients that are receiving services at the Day Resource Center that volunteer at the Day Resource Center. We have a gentleman that does it every single day that we're open, and he does the laundry area. So he makes sure it stays clean, that the clients have what they need, and that they're getting in and out. And of course, we're always in need of volunteers. So, some of the challenges that we've had, one of the big, one of the biggest challenges is the building itself. I don't think that we, we anticipated, nor the city anticipated, the number of people that would be coming through that, that building. Going back a slide, when we, when I said we had 991 coming in, our contractual agreement is to have 200 for the year. So in five months, we've already seen 991. So there's a lot of maintenance issues that are happening. The showers, there are four showers in the building. We've been running at 50% capacity since September. So the shower numbers, that's based on two showers running. The charging station, that went down in November, so that still has not been repaired. And then, we had a wash, a washing machine down, but that has since been fixed, because a council member came in and got that done. Unexpected financial costs to Cumberland Health Net. What that is, is there's three FTEs that are in our, our agreement, and that doesn't cover if somebody is out or sick, then I have to send somebody else to cover. It also doesn't cover any of my salary, which, the magnitude of the Day Resource Center, I'm spending 20 to 30% of my time overseeing the Day Resource Center as well. Another challenge was the lack of community awareness of what the Day Resource Center is. A lot of people in the community thought it was a shelter, that it would be white flag, but it is just during the day. And again, that's in our contractual agreement. It's open nine to five, Monday through Fridays, closed on the weekend, and we're closed on most city holidays. However, if Manna still is going to do lunch, then one of my staff will come in and open the building, so that we can still provide lunch to the clients. And then there was some confusion about a full commercial kitchen versus a catering kitchen. So that was how the building was designed. It is a catering kitchen. One of the things that we're, we're doing, because we always want to look to improve, so we are doing client satisfaction surveys. So we've done 62, and one of the proudest things that I would say, out of this client satisfaction survey, was that 100% of the clients surveyed are pleased with how the Cumberland Health Net staff is interacting with them. They feel respected, they feel loved, and feel like they're engaging with a family member. And then 32% gave us some recommendations, and these are just some of them that they've requ, that they put on the evaluation form, extended hours, community cleanup, low-income housing, and computer services. One of the other things was increasing social, socialization activities, which we're working on that. Our goal is to have a social, socialization activity every day that we're open. So I know, as everyone knows, we will not be renewing the contract as of June 30th. Cumberland Health Net, we started because we were helping uninsured with a medical home. With the advent of Medicaid expansion, that changes who Cumberland Health Net is. And so we need to take the time to figure out who Cumberland Health Net is with Medicaid expansion here. But with that, we're still going to continue throughout, through the end of our contract, to continue to do quality services. We're committed to working with whoever the new operator is in the transition period to help them with whatever they need. And as I said, increased socialization activities. We had a job fair, Cape Fear Valley had a job fair at the Day Resource Center. And one of the other things that I wanted to share was, we had a person that had lived experience, came in and did a paint and sip, with the population sip being juice. And so, the theme was, what does home mean to you? And so what they could do was, they could either pick an already-sketched canvas, and so this one says, "This is my happy place." So you could see, and this is from someone from, coming in to the Day Resource Center. And then this one is freehand. So this is what someone painted freehand, which is pretty amazing. And then I just want to share this one. This person said, "I am a person." And finally, the DRC is a facility for the community, by the community, and in order for it... And in order for it to continue to be successful, it takes all of us working together. So that's all I have.
All right, Ms. Hudson, well, thank you. I'm sure we have a couple of questions. Councilmember here.
First, thank you for all that you have tried to do, have done, attempted to do. This is a moving service, I guess I can say. You know, it's, it's always changing, will, will probably be, continue to change and to improve. And I know that we've had some, some hiccups, because I've heard, I've received the calls probably just as much as my colleagues have, and it's, it's a learning, it's, it's a big learning process. So I, I do give a thumbs up and an applaud to Cumberland Health Net, and even what our vision as a council was. And it's hard. This is, this is hard, and I don't think rocks need to be thrown at it. It's a hard service to provide, and it's always changing. And I'm glad that we put this initiative forward, and that sometimes when we do initiatives, that's when we find out what needs to be done, what the improvements need to be, where do we go from here, how do we improve? If the people that are doing, doing the managing or overseeing, if that's the right fit, do you need to do something else? Do you need someone else? So, me personally, I'm all in with my, hopefully with my colleagues, for us to continue to move forward. And how can we improve this? Because we're not throwing it away. How can we improve in moving forward? As you look, as you gave us some of your challenges and concerns, and I was, I was just kind of surprised of the number that the contract or the vision was 200 a year. That shocked me even when you said it, because just being here, the tenure of years I've lived here, I could see us going way beyond that. So how that 200 number was even constructed into contract, it, I'm a little, maybe that can be answered. The computer services, I thought that when I did, and I've been in the Resource Center a few times, and especially during our ribbon cutting or our opening, I just assumed, and apparently we know what assumes can be, that we had computer services. I, I just kind of assumed that we did. And how can we move forward to improve that? Is that something that we can even maybe look out to Metronet for what they're doing for our city, to give free Wi-Fi support for the area? And I, I'm still, like I said, I'm still on board and, and whatever we can do to move forward. And thank you for all it is that you tried to do. And I know that we have a lot of great improvements, and I'm in here for the long haul to try to help with my colleagues on us improving of the Day Resource Center. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. All right. Ms. Hudson, thank you. Did have just a couple of statements. This is more for, more so for council. We do understand that you had an agreement with us that, that Cumberland Health Net followed. I think when we originally started this journey for Day Resource Center, we started in, in Raleigh to look at Oak City Cares model, which had a different component to it, that had service collaboration for the various organizations and agencies there, that had city and county, Raleigh and Wake. And it had veteran services there that would be there, a certain day, mental health would be there, so on and so forth. I don't think we ever mirrored that in our agreement with you. And one is what we were kind of explaining to the public, or at least me, was that this Resource Center would be a one-stop shop that did that. Now, I know you probably had your own version of connecting, but, but, but I know that put a lot of pressure on you with people coming in expecting one thing, and you may or may not have that in your, in your toolbox. So that was one. Can you speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, I, I think that a memorandum of agreement is a voluntary document, right? We have reached out to several other agencies, and we've sent the MOU, but we haven't gotten signed ones back. So.
And, and that could have been, you know, what led to extra amount of pressure being put on you. I, I do think, council, as we look for the new partner that takes place, that we need to define, because we do give the manager a certain latitude to be able to enter into these contracts, as long as it doesn't exceed a certain threshold. I think we need to kind of lay real clearly what expectations are. You know, some things we've ran across are operating hours. You know, we've got a lot of calls and pushback that, you know, after 5 o'clock, that things were not available, or people were not available, or expectation was that there would be a, a kitchen that was accessible to other members. You know, I meet with a group of nonprofits in this space once a month, and it was probably 20 of them when we first started meeting that were doing some type of feeding initiative downtown at the same time. It was overlap. And so you've got a lot of people who are doing a lot of things, but this facility needs to be open to where all that burden is not on. For Manna to serve 16,000 meals by themselves, how many more could we push out the door if there would have been other partnerships? So I think we've got to kind of clarify with the manager what it is we're looking for and what we want this to be, so that the next operator can, can really have a, a different level of expectation, based on what we've heard. I think you guys did a great job with what you could do for the first five months, but I, I just want the council to consider thinking about that as we move to this next phase of that. So, Mayor Protim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think the biggest thing, number one, thank you for all that you've done, and, you know, this was something very new to us. And the one thing that I think everybody needs to put into reality of it is, y'all went thinking there would be 200 people, and there was 900 plus in five months. Now we're talking capacity here. I mean, that is the first thing that needs to be looked at, because I can't imagine that, you know, I was expecting 200 people in a year, and 900 plus, and, you know, the showers that you had to do, the laundry. When we sat and everybody heard, well, the machines are down, well, now we know why they were down. I mean, they were working and working and working. So I hope that we did get some, you know, data, so we can kind of see where people are coming from, you know, and how we can help. But I think capacity is probably going to be one of our biggest challenges. But again, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Protim. Councilmember McNair?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I just want to say thank you, Shelley. What I can say from this point, I am looking forward to working along with council and the county. Yes, we have had several conversations, and I'm very excited about it, because they are all on board, and I see us moving forward, taking what you have gone through and learned, and we're not going to throw away, throw it away, but we are going to build from there. And so, we are looking forward to making this a greater center, and also with the understanding of the purpose. I think that was key. A lot, like you said, a lot of the community didn't have understanding why this facility was built in the first place. And so we're gonna, we're gonna spread the word and add new meaning, as our city manager, Kelly, continues to work with us on that, and along with Councilmember Davis and Banks McGlaughlin. We are working on that together now as you speak. I do believe she has something to say.
Yes, ma'am. So 200 clients was kind of our minimum that, that we anticipated. We didn't want to have a facility out there that served less than that. So that was kind of the bare bones threshold for the number of clients that we wanted to be seen at the facility. In regards to the computers, sir, we are still of a mindset that we do need to have that at the center. There have been so many different services that the center has tried to provide, that Cumberland Health Net has sought out volunteers to provide, because that has been their role. They are not the provider of all services. They are the conduit by which others can come in to the facility and provide all services. So they will continue to seek out that opportunity, and whoever is our next operating partner, we would expect to continue to seek out not only that, but other resources that are identified by the community, whether you're a, a client of the Day Resource Center or a volunteer. I think one of the key components moving forward, and Ms. Hudson and I have talked about this, and she certainly agrees, is that moving forward over the next six months, five months, what we expect to see is much more impact and much more collaboration with other entities. They have recently, I think Brittany started the end of January.
She started in November.
In November.
November.
So their volunteer coordinator started in November, so once she got on board, and she's really taken that ball and run with it, we, they have seen a big uptake, uptick in the number of folks who want to come in and who want to volunteer, and who want to help provide services there. And now they have the staff person in place to be able to coordinate all of that, which has been very key and crucial to making this a success. So we look forward to continued success, improved success during the rest of our time with Cumberland Health Net and with whoever comes in after them to help us operate the center.
Thank you. All right. Anything needed from us as far as action? Was this just an update? Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin, you had a question?
Yes. I do want to say with, with the Day Resource Center, I do want to take the time to thank Cumberland County, I'm sorry, Cumberland Health Net for being willing to take over such a big responsibility. I know back in 2019, when I championed it with, championed the Day Resource Center, as well as the support from my colleagues, I think our expectation was higher. However, we know with projects, with this magnitude, capacity and collaboration play a major role. I do want to recognize Manna Church for also taking on the help of feeding these individuals, as well as our community partners and the volunteers, as well as our county commissioners for being willing to open up another location where they're able to serve beds for the unhoused residents in our area, and our state legislator for funding this project. So again, just to the Cumberland Health Net, thank you for being willing and utilizing the resources to help provide resources to our community. I just hope, hope moving forward, because time is of essence. I think you say you're, the contract in, in July, that's literally around the corner. I hope staff have been looking at other, other organizations with, with some experience to be able to come in and help fill in the gap, because that, that is, that was several million dollars spent for this, for this building. So we still want to make sure this facility is being utilized to help other individuals. So again, thank you all for, for helping those in, in our community who are seeking resources. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, council, any questions, comments? All right, Ms. Hudson, thank you.
Thank you, team.
All right, council, as we move to item 4.07 through 4.01, these are council member requests. As you know, our policy says that these requests are five minutes for the council member making the request to be able to explain to the colleagues what it is that they're trying to do, and to see if there's a consensus to move it forward to, for research and more time investment by staff. So with that, I'll move to Madam Clerk. Who's tracking time, Jen, you got?
See it.
Oh, all right.
I'll push play whenever you stop.
And welcome back, Jennifer. Yay!
Thank you.
And where's our new fire chief at? Hey, sir, congratulations. We're gonna get you to come to the mic before we're said and done, so. Don't get too far away. All right. So council, I will move to 4.07 and 8, a kind of intertwined, you know, I've known this, but, but it really was, was brought to light at the State of the Real Estate Association, State of the Real Estate Market here in Fayetteville, that the Real Estate Association had not too long ago, where they had some great economic information specific to us. As you know, the tier one status that we're in, there are a number of factors that go into that. One is the amount of avalore, or our tax base, how many properties are actually taxpaying properties. Two is the average wages, and, and three, you know, your poverty rate, and it was, it was one more, population growth or unemployment rate, either of which, all of those metrics factor in. And so I wanted to have for your consideration, kind of like a challenge for our community. I didn't get a chance to put this on here, but kind of the can-do 300, to where we can set a goal as, 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 as a city to encourage at least 300 people to become homeowners. You know, our rental to homeowner ratio is changing. Even in the last housing study, it showed that it went in the opposite direction. It went more closer to 70% than 60%, and the homeownership went down from the 40% level down to, to the 30s. And so, the, according to the Realtors Association, the average net worth in 2019 for a renter was $7,300, was the average homeowner's net worth was $295,000. Average net worth in 2022 for a renter was $10,400, and the average homeowner's net worth was $396,200. So what I wanted to do was to see, one, the city has a down payment assistance plan we put in probably five years ago, that was for city employees originally to go to a certain area. We expanded that to, to allow, well, first it was for first responders only, it was police fire, I think, and then we expanded it to other city employees. And I heard a great testimony from one of our employees, I won't mention her name, that was, was happy that she was able to buy her home for the first time. She had lived in a, in a rental area, right off of the Merkington Road area, and she purchased her first home because of the down payment assistance program. It was a great story, and we, we all know, and she's worked around us, but it really was life-changing for her. So she goes from this equation, from, you know, what the averages are for a renter, to now having a, a major asset of a home. And then finally, I'll say this, that how item two ties into this is, one, the down payment assistance that we have for city employees, which have about 1,800, if we could consider expanding that to local government employees, that would include the school system, where there's 6,601 employees in the school system. So that'd be cafeteria workers, school teachers, social workers, also Cape Fear Valley, you know, the EMS and first responders there. There are about 7,400 employees with, with Cape Fear Valley. So really, you're taking now a program that's, that's kind of concentrated to 1,900 people and making it eligible for almost 15,000 people, and I think the 300 would be an easy goal to meet, even if we looked at maybe adjusting from the 30,000, because we were not using the funds regularly enough, didn't have enough applications that were doing it. So we up, and plus inflation, so we upped the amount of the down payment to 30,000. But take the same amount that we have allocated, let's maybe lower the threshold, but expand the people who are eligible for it is, is a, is a great way to do it. And so those are two things. That was just, one was a pledge, no monetary commitment to that, it's just basically encouraging people to do it, and working with our Realtor Association and some of our local Realtors. And then two, looking to tweak our down payment assistance. So that, that was 4.07 and 8. All right, councilmember here and then benefi- Herr and then Benevente.
Yeah, Mayor, thank you. I have no problem with this, especially as we look to increase throughout the municipality as far as, like you say, the teachers and other government folk within the city. I think it's, it's great. I will say and acknowledge and give a thumbs up to our Economic Development Group, which the lead role that night was Mr. Baker, who's in the room with us tonight, that they are going throughout the city and, and Community Watch Groups, because they were just with me last week at Summer Hill, pushing this very thing. A number of other things, but pushing this very first time home buyer program and assistance. And so raising the, raising the ratio out to include more, to get that number up, to help improve, you know, as, as we try to improve on, on affordable housing. I'm 100% in support of that.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Benevente?
Just want to make, take action on both of these items so we can move forward.
Okay. All right, and, okay. All right, Councilmember Honduras, then I'll come back to you.
As we expand the eligibility for the employees of Cafer Valley and the, the school system, the, the homes still have to be in the incorporated city limits, correct?
Yeah.
And then second, on the 300, you mentioned 30,000, up to 30,000, if you qualify for first time home buyer assistance, is there enough money allocated for the 300?
So this was just one piece to that, right? That, that this is not going to be the only program that, that gets to 300. We're just championing the fact that we want people to live here and buy houses and, and how we can encourage 300 people to be owners. One of the other things, Housing Authority, I know I'm out of time. Housing Authority has about 108 properties that they've had in ownership for 20 years. I talked to Mr. Driggers over there to see about how it is. HUD recommended this also, to see that the most qualified people who've lived in there for a long period of time can transition over to, to owning that. So. All right, so council.
Let me add, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah. Yeah, well, I had two items. Didn't it, was it?
Take action on this first.
Oh, okay. All right. All right. It's Councilmember Benevente. Well, we got, we got time on that.
Send, send these two items to staff.
All right. All right. Motion by Councilmember Benevente, seconded by Councilmember Herr. Discussion. All right, those in favor. All right. Thank y'all, council. And then Councilmember Thompson, I still got about two and a half minutes.
Mayor, I just.
Thank you, Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin.
Thanks, so you got a second.
Yeah, they didn't do 4.08.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to emphasize that I looked at the same chart that you sent me by the Realtors Association about how the numbers are flip-flopping. And coincidentally enough, I was just on a podcast last week with Mr. MacArthur, talking about first time home buyers in the city of Fayetteville. And we're going to do the same thing on my radio show later this week. But we also have to understand discrepancies. You said they're not using the money. It's probably because a lot of people don't know.
Yeah.
They don't know the availability that they have of being able to use city funds to help them. And what we also have to realize and make sure that they're able to stay into that house and not just be able to get a house. So that's more of a conversation that we'll have later on. But thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. All right, council, I'll move out of the way for item 4.09, Councilmember Green.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Ed Schaff. Thank you.
Did we vote?
Yeah. Oh, on one of them, we need to do. Oh, he said both of them, didn't he? Okay. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, that was it. All right, Councilmember Green.
All right. This is my request to have the staff draft a towing ordinance to address requirements of proper signage, which basically equates to public notice in towaway zones prior to cars being towed from private property. This stemmed really out of a situation where new business was located, not enough parking, cars started being towed out of a private lot. The signage was not there, that was required by the North Carolina General Statute. But when I asked questions about it, it seemed that we didn't have a city ordinance to allow enforcement of that general statute, that state statute. So my request is, in following lines, I also included in the request, two articles on King versus the Town of Chapel Hill. I hope you all had time to read them. But they dealt with the fact that there was, there had to be signage on the entrances and the exits, and that signing had to meet the signage requirements, which is a lot variable, but basically 24 by 24, tow name, company name, the phone number for the tow truck, so that when your car was towed, you had, you had knowledge of where it was, who towed it. And they are, in this situation, they were only taking cash payments. The towing was approximately $400. So sometimes that is not available through the ATM. So we did not want, I would like to see them have to be required to take a payment other than cash because on weekends, some, like my personally, my bank account doesn't allow more than $300 in cash to be withdrawn. So I spoke with Attorney Pullman. She and Attorney Hall and I went to the site. We looked at the signs. We reviewed everything. And this was, this is my request, so that we can remedy this situation hopefully. And then as we move forward with parking issues probably downtown, and as the theater gets renovated, and as the, as the Coliseum is moved out into the county, then we will have addressed this, and this will be nice and clean, so that no one else will have to go through this.
I want to make sure I'm understanding. So my question is, there's a state law that says that a private owner has to have a sign on their property saying that if you park on my property without permission or whatever it says, that if you don't have it, if you don't get that, if, if the sign is not there, they have to have the sign there before you can go and start towing vehicles.
Correct.
So there's a state law that says private property owners have to have a no towing, I mean, a towing sign, a no parking sign, and a vehicle may be towed.
Correct. It has to announce a towaway zone. Yes, sir.
I have them, but I didn't know, I didn't know that was a law.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
But there's no city ordinance to back it up.
Hmm. He's old. I didn't know that.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Councilmember Benevente?
Move that we ask staff to take the next steps on this item.
All right. There's a motion. Is there a second about Councilmember McNair? Discussion? All right. Sure. Okay.
I understand what you're saying. I had that done, had that done, way beyond because of anything that we're speaking of. I had it done because I was getting illegal parking, okay? So how do we get, are we supposed to get that word out to all of the private owners? And I assume they're private. Are you meaning business owners only that have business property? Or you mean?
Property, period.
Just property in general? And then how do we get, because I'm pretty sure, like I did not know until tonight, that that was something that was a, a state policy.
I think that the staff can deal with that. When they're writing the ordinance, they'll figure out how to give notice, just like we give notice for other things, I would, I would imagine. We, laws change, ordinances change, we, we add some, we take them away. We did that today. So whatever that process is, I'm sure it's already in place. I'm not sure.
I don't.
And that's just not saying, just because you own a piece, probably gotta have a sign. It's just saying if you enforce towing there, you've got to notify people. I think it's what she's saying.
Okay. Yeah. I mean, I understand about what staff does, but to me, this is, but okay. All right.
All right. We had our five-minute mark, council. Show of hands, those in favor of moving this to staff. Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin?
Green.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Green. All right, council, moving to the next item 4.010, Councilmember Honduras.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We brought this, I brought this back up in November. This is about the downtown parking situation. Had a lot of citizens, a lot of downtown business owners that stated that they preferred the, the paid parking to end at 5:00 PM. At the time, there was some concerns on council that perhaps all of the downtown business owners were not contacted. So since that time, we met myself and Councilmember Davis, who represents District Two, met with Cool Spring Downtown District, who is here today, as well as the Downtown Alliance. They're supportive of that. They did express to us other challenges with the downtown parking, such as some things that are occurring in the parking decks and so forth. So this, this will not fix all of the challenges with downtown parking. I guess our ask, or my ask today, is kind of twofold. One, have staff look at ending the, the paid parking at 5:00 PM instead of 7:00 PM, which we can do that in relatively short order. And then secondly, if council, if there was consensus on council, we can take a larger look at the entire paid parking program. In looking at this and talking with residents and downtown business owners, the only negative really that anybody has articulated is the loss, potential loss of revenue from the parking for those two hours, which is why I want staff to, the ask is to have staff look at what that will actually look like. I think if I'm not mistaken, paid parking begins at 9:00 AM and ends at 7:00 PM. One way to get one of those hours back, we could start at 8:00 AM and end at 5:00 PM. And with that, I'll reserve time for questions. I don't know if Councilman Davis wants to speak on it.
Well, I have Mayor Protiem and then Benevente and then Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The questions that I have on downtown parking that we have discussed for, you know, 15 years plus, is we, if I'm not mistaken, about a year and a half ago, the downtown came to us and said, please change your parking because they're coming to the baseball games. They're parking at 5:00, parking, coming to the baseball game and taking up the parking space through the whole baseball game. So we changed it to 7:00 to kind of work that through, because they were coming, having their dinner, and then taking up the parking. I guess my concern in all of this, and it is, it cost us, I think if I'm not mistaken, $300,000 to $400,000 a year in parking.
It was five.
It's gone up to five now.
But I mean, we fixed it now.
Yep. So, but I know that we run a deficit.
Yes, ma'am, we do. And it's subsidized by the general fund.
And it's subsidized by the general fund. So, so we're talking 4.1 million people that come down a year. And if we are going to pay people to do parking, and my position has never changed, we either make it all free, or we have to charge. But to subsidize $500,000 plus a year and charge, I think we're just, we're on, we're on our hamster wheel again.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Benevente?
I was prepared to make a motion, at least on one of the two requests.
All right. Let me circle back to you. Councilmember Davidson and Herr.
Yeah, it's just really echoing, Councilman Honduras, we met with Downtown District and Cool Springs District and the Downtown Alliance. And this is a recommendation that came from the business owners downtown. And so as we know, business owners has a voice too. So that's what we're doing.
That's Councilman Herr.
Wow. I thought that, I'm, I'm sort of in a, in a mix now because it was the business owners that came to us a few years ago.
Said they had a parking space.
Saying, hey, when it's time for the ballgame and people come and maybe, say they come and park at 4:00, and they park directly in front of the businesses and get the fresh and the best parking spaces and stay there to 9:00 o'clock at night. So I'm, I'm, I'm sort of mixed in understanding. I mean, I want to, I'm big in supporting the councilmember that represents the area because I'm hoping that he or she are the ones that are really involved with the communities better than I am. But I just remember, that was what they told us when we looked to change it before. So I'm a little not.
All right.
I understand.
So we approached our, yes, sir, Councilmember Honduras.
I'd just like to add, on that request there, there's a letter of support from Cool Spring Downtown District as well as Downtown Alliance attached to that item, if, if y'all care to see it. And they've articulated their reasoning for supporting it better than I could. But with that, I'll just add, no one's talking about not taking away downtown park, paid parking downtown. It's just, we, we did it earlier today. We cleaned up some stuff to make our ordinances and policies equivalent to our pure cities. Most of our pure cities that have paid parking, it ends at 5:00 PM when the business stay in. So that's, that's all they're asking for.
All right. Well, Ms. Keller?
May I ask for a point of clarification? You would like staff to come back and present the financial impact of making the change?
Yeah. So tonight, we can only do a, a motion, a consensus motion, right? So it wouldn't change the actual policy.
That's correct.
So I think when we see the actual data, it could either resize our reservations or, or not. So.
Yes, sir.
All right, council. Councilmember Benevente?
Yeah, for that reason, I wasn't going to make a motion to change the time necessarily, but rather that we say that we're out of date. We've gotten some updates from the business owners. Let's have our city staff present exactly what it would look like for us to go to 5:00, since that's what more contemporarily, you know, the contemporary request is that we move it to 5:00.
All right. All right. Show of hands. All right. And this is just to come back for information. Those opposed? Yeah. This, this for information. All right. All right. Those opposed? All right. Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin?
So you said just for information?
Yeah, this is just for staff to run the financial impacts.
Okay, Green.
All right. All right. All right. So, all right. And, and we got to understand, and as we end the meeting, good, good request, good, good meeting, council, before we move into the special meeting. You know, sometimes it's just an update, you know, because we, we've got different people at the table. So it's not a right or wrong. And sometimes you need to tweak things just to get it quite right. So.
We, we talk about how we want to emulate this pure city and emulate this pure city. It's just fascinating to me that at our last retreat, when we went to Atlanta, I went downtown about 8:00 at night, had to pay almost $4 an hour for parking.
Yeah.
And here it is, we went to alleviate paid parking. And you wonder why their city is booming and we're having trouble, struggling. It's just, it's just fascinating to me. But thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. All right, council. Councilmember Benevente? All right, council, good meeting. Uh, uh.
Do you want to look at the whole paid parking program?
No, I think, I think the motion was clear for y'all to bring back financial impacts, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. All right, council, we have a special meeting. So if y'all want to stand up, stretch your legs. I want to push right into it. All right. Yeah.